As you probably think so. Move away from Donna. Oh, yeah.
I try to stay out of the way. I do.
I hear somebody. That was shy. Uh-oh. Now what? He could fit in between.
Karen and Monique.
You bumping Monique? She's getting cozy and she's getting bumped.
Monique, do you mind dropping off your seat, Mr. Bevine?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sean, you're right over here.
Here's Rebecca.
How do girls feel about that?
I think we have a name tag for every possibility.
Really? I tried doing that, my too.
Right here. Thank you, Monique.
All right. Now that we've covered every awkward possible scenario, we're ready to start.
Karen just stepped out to call Amy. Oh, wait.
For Karen to come back in.
Yeah.
Oh, you're ready?
Karen just stepped out to call Amy. I see Jamie's in the parking lot or something close, so.
Did we already do a sound test?
I don't know.
Did we already do a sound test? Do you, can you tell us? You can hear it? You want us to try it? Hello? Good evening? Test? Testing? Testing one, two? You got it? Do yours, Karen. You're not going to hear it.
Yeah. It's just for the camera.
For the camera, yeah.
Yeah. There isn't a P.A. system besides announcements from the office, as far as we know. Kelly, back us up on that?
A portable speaker if anybody goes to record it. Record it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. We'll get started and then... So, one empty chair, so it should be easy enough. So, we think this one's wired for the...
For that speaker, for that...
Yeah. Okay. All right, we ready? Ready? Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for December fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. May I have the attendance, please?
Mrs. Beely.
Here.
Mrs. Lieford.
Here.
Mrs. Massengill.
Here.
Dr. Miles. Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Ms. Hobbs. Mr. Vascon.
Thank you. Will you join me in the pledge? There's a little flag over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good. Okay. So, four point oh, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes. There are adjustments to the agenda, Table six point one, Meeting Minutes of November. The recommendation is to table that. The minutes will be presented at the next meeting, January sixth.
And do we have anyone that would like to come up to the podium? Now, let's put the microphone back. The podium for public comment. We're going to bring the microphone back for you. The space is great, but we don't have microphones.
Good evening, members of the board and all of our lawmakers here and our public officials and the general public. I'm Steffi Cox. I'm the Director of Project Race here in Scarborough. I look around and see many good friends who've been helping us. And I'm flying here tonight to say thank you. We're neighbors helping neighbors. This week, we were in the throes of our Great Holiday Giving Campaign. A hundred and three children received Christmas presents that were very personal to their likes and sizes and their hobbies. And it was all thanks to a great community effort. And so, it won't turn into the Academy Awards. I won't list everybody who helped. I wanted to draw particular attention to the teachers and the social workers and school nurses of our wonderful schools who have their eyes out for kids who might need an extra pair of shoes or whose coat is looking a little thin or know the personal stories of parents who've confided in them. And as a result, they have made contact with us. They were trying to help them with that. It's something that they wanted to have. It's all permission based. And we wouldn't be able to do the work that we do without the outstanding help of the staff of the school. So, why don't you bring that to your attention and particularly recognize Sidney Fafula, who does a lot of outreach for the nursing department, Christine Gerber at high school, and also Sandra Brown Casey and all the other fine case workers and very loving and caring individuals in our school system. Just wanted to say thanks and very pleased to see you all.
Thank you. I know. Okay. So, do we need to vote on the table for tabling the minutes? How does that work? For the, for new business, we don't need to... Okay. Okay. So, that brings us to six point two. Appointment of High School Winter Coaches.
Various school staff and community members have been nominated to fill these positions that will be funded through the General Fund or booster funded. The recommendation is to appoint the High School Winter Coaching Positions as presented in Agenda Item six point two.
Don't move.
Second. Is there any discussion or questions? Jackie?
I had a thought this afternoon. And it is nothing critical, but I would like sometime either at the end of, I think at the end of each season, it would be nice to know how many of our students participated in each activity. I'm talking about the athletic activities now. Because I know it's huge, but we've never had the number. So, as I say, it's not imminent, but it's just information I think would be helpful to us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor? Six? Thank you. Six point three, Appointment of High School Co-Curricular Advisors.
High school...
Okay. You want to...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
High school staff have been nominated to fill these positions that will be funded from the General Fund. The recommendation is to appoint the High School Co-Curricular Positions as presented in Agenda Item six point three.
Any questions or discussion? Okay.
Just a little approval, I'll do second.
Yeah, I think it's already seconded, so...
You get it?
Yep. All in favor? Six? Thank you. Okay. We're right up to the workshop session. First, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We have Public Town Councilors here and some of our representatives to the legislature. So, thank you for coming out. It is a frigid and terrible night to be anywhere but in front of your fireplace under a lot of blankets. So, I appreciate you coming. And I'll leave it to you.
Sure. I was going to start off with one apology. I used a template to create the slide deck, so the cover slide is completely inaccurate. You could just put a big giant X on it if you have a copy of the presentation. But it is updated here, so you're not going to hear about my goals tonight, but instead, more of an overview of the district and I'll get into the agenda.
Do you want, now that the microphone is back over there, do you want to go back over there?
Sure.
And then we'll slide out of the way?
Getting my steps in today.
Should we slide out of the way so we can see?
Yeah.
Twenty First Century Theater Festival in Hennepin, right? I wanted to start off the presentation by thanking Senator Volz for being here and Senator Mallett. Representative Vascon is also here. And we have Counselor Rowan with us tonight, Counselor Chazzo, Counselor Foley, Counselor Bevine, and Counselor Haynes with us this evening. So, thank you all for coming. We also have our Assistant Town Manager, Lurica Crockett, here tonight. And several of our school leaders are here. And despite the fact that it's really, really cold out, they've worked really, really hard during the day and during the week. So, I did want to just take a moment to thank each of them and just call it by name because I know the cameras are a little different here. So, I want all of our community members to know how committed our staff is. So, thank you. Assistant Principal Anne Kasper being here, Principal Anne Lovejoy, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assistance and a bunch of other things. Then, Colbertson, Assistant Superintendent Wade Carrier. Or, I mean, Principal. Women, Barb Hathorn, our Principal at the Middle School. Kelly Crosby, our Principal here at Wentworth. Allison Marchese, who is our Director of Special Services, Assistant Director of Special Services, Chris Rhodey. Jennifer Lim, our Technology Director. Catherine Brubie, Director of Teaching and Learning. Remember, everybody's titles with a "swiss." And Assistant Principal of the High School, Frank Applespoon. Thank you so much. And then here at the table, we have our Director of Business and Finance and our Solicitor Director, Todd Justin, Director of Business and Finance, Kate Perkins. If I forgot anyone, please speak now. All right. Well, thank you all very much for being here. I feel really honored and privileged to have this opportunity to talk a bit about the Scarborough Public Schools with you tonight. I plan to give a brief district overview and some statistics. I also will talk about some of the accomplishments of the Scarborough Public Schools and know that I will certainly not cover them all because there are many. We'll talk a little bit about the challenges that we face when serving our students in today's day and age. Of course, a little picture of funding for us. We'll talk about a few other key issues that are in the cycle and taking a lot of our time and attention. And thus, we'll look at some of the bills that we think will be on the horizon as we get into the next legislative session. And really, the intent of tonight is to think about how can we partner for shared success so that we ensure that all of the kids in Scarborough get a really high quality education that's a part of successful success. And then, that will be filed up with a presentation from A.M. Pfeffel and Lisa Sreen, from Harriman, who will talk about our long range plan. Because we've been updating that. So, it's a full agenda, but we hope to keep it entertaining. Just now, with a few more, you know, and there's something for me. But we'll be able to be important information for you. So, I like to start every conversation reminding us all why we exist and why we're here. And so, part of my core belief is that our fundamental purpose and the fundamental purpose of our own school really is ensuring high levels of learning for all students. Intentionally, "all" is in uppercase. We may talk about "all." Therefore, we must do whatever it takes to bring all students to their full potential. And so, tonight, when I'm sharing information with you, it's really going to be about all of our kids because we really do believe in Scarborough Public Schools that all of our kids are all of our kids. So, this, and when I talk about reaching their full potential, that includes social, emotional learning. That includes academic learning. It also includes making sure that they're enriched through extracurricular activities. So, the purpose for this workshop, my sole intent is to really become, ensure that we become the experts that you turn to on any education issue. And that whenever you have a question about what's changing in the educational landscape in the state of Maine and in Scarborough specifically, that you come to us and ask us questions so we can give you some information on what's really going on and guide your decision making as you go into your next legislative session, but also as you're thinking about big decisions in the course of our budget and the needs of our schools. So, first, starting with our kids. We have six schools in the Scarborough Public Schools who have given you a notice very well. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one students at my last count. Could be plus or minus a student on any given day. And then, let's just give you the breakdown. We do currently have three primary schools. The Blue Springs School has one hundred and ninety-three students. Eight Corners is the only school in our system that is technically a head one school with two hundred and twenty-seven students. And Pleasant Hill has one hundred and seventy-four students. Here at the Intermediate School, Wentworth, third grade, three through five, and we have about six hundred and seventy-three students there. And then, at the Middle School, we're serving students aged six through eight with seven hundred and fourteen students currently enrolled. And then, at our high school, we have nine hundred and eighty-nine students. So, you should all know that Monday was our first official school cancellation. A big part of that is... A big part of that is coordinating and working with our Transportation Director, also working with our Assistant Superintendent, Julian Sighmore, and our Director of Facilities, Todd Justin. We were up late and early, testing and really trying to figure out, you know, is it safe for us to get all of our buses out on our roads in all of our neighborhoods? Because as everyone knows, Scarborough is fifty-five per mile or sometimes even fifty-six. But we have twenty-nine buses and four minivans that transport our students in and outside of the district, which means that we have twenty or twenty-two full-time drivers. We have five educational technicians that help support students on the buses and then that's just one supervisor of transportation. And so, currently, we run three bus routes two times a day, equalling about four hundred and fifty thousand miles per year, which is several trips around the world. I think it's like twenty-five thousand miles to go around the world one time. So, I'll leave the math up to you. But I remember that little tidbit from the emergency room last year. So, food service is something that we've been talking a lot about and it seems to come up every year when we're talking about the budget and when she just gave us our recent fiscal update. This is one of the areas of the budget that I think we need to really look closely at in our next budget cycle because it often is not properly funded in order for us to run this department and serve our students where it used to appear that way in the way we're currently budgeting it. But we have an amazing Director of Food Service who's made lots of creative and innovative things with healthy, fresh meals. He has one Assistant, Administrative Assistant, three Kitchen Managers, six Cooks and Bakers, and fifteen Kitchen Workers. And currently, they're serving about twelve hundred meals every day. So, ninety-eight breakfasts, about eleven hundred lunches. And one of the things that we're really proud of is our Back Cap program. And so, we, here at Wentworth, have a food pantry where community members are deluding all year long. And we're serving twenty-two families currently with about fifty children that are supported. So, what that does is with the coordination of our Food Service Director and his Administrative Assistant, they make sure that on long holiday breaks, it's not really a back cap. It's more of a box of foods that goes home with nutritious meal options for our kids and our families so that they can stay nourished over those breaks when we're not able to serve their meals here in school. I think it's one of the, one of the many important things that we do here is make sure that all of our kids are ready to learn by having nutritious meals.
I'm sorry, can I ask where the breakfast meals are?
Sure. Well, it depends on the school. And at the high school, they eat it in the cafeteria. Here at Wentworth, I noticed the other day when I was coming here, it was kind of a grab and go. So, they'll grab their breakfast meal and eat it with them to their classroom and the cafeteria also.
So, this is a high school and middle school program?
No, it's actually a twelve program.
A twelve, and this is ninety-eight meals a day?
Currently, we're serving ninety-eight breakfast meals a day. Yeah. And about fifteen point seven percent of our population is classified free or reduced lunch, which means that they qualify for, you know, for going to lunch and breakfast. But, you know, we were often wondering, because that's a self-reporting system. There are some direct reports involved, but we're actually wondering if that's an accurate representation of the needs of our student population. But one of the things that I know our school board is really passionate about is promoting the school lunch program and the breakfast program so that more and more families will typically have the opportunity that we present here at the school. And even for our little, even for our little guys down in K two, some of them are at the school. Even though the school, they start at nine, they're there at seven for before here and staying until six at nine for after here. So, I know they have to answer that for them as well. Ma'am?
I just wanted to comment on the breakfast, that it is ninety-eight meals, but that does not include the à la carte items that kids come in and buy.
Oh, yes. I shouldn't have mentioned that. We, on a daily basis, we're serving about two thousand three hundred dollars worth of à la carte, à la carte meals. So, that's fresh baked goods. That's wheat and some sandwiches. And also, can be snack items that students choose to purchase. Thank you, ma'am. And really, leadership, anyone who wants to jump in, feel free. Because I'm still learning about Scarborough. I do want to know that for sure. So, I'm only going to briefly talk about our facilities because I know we're going to dig in deep when we get into our long range plan. But, yeah, Todd is our Director and he's here tonight with us. He has thirty-six employees and one Administrative Assistant. We currently have twenty-three full-time custodians and seven apartment custodians, one maintenance supervisor and three maintenance workers taking care of all six of our buildings. And, you know, this room, the way it looks tonight for this presentation is a good example of the teamwork and the hustle that our crew has because when I came in at about six o'clock, quarter to six, it wasn't set up at all. They were waiting for our directions so that it would be just how we wanted it. And so, we thank them for their dedication and all the work that they do because our schools are really, really community schools. They're used before school, obviously during school, after school, and all throughout the summer. So, it's rare to come into one of our buildings and not find something going on. And the community uses them after school, in the evenings, on the weekends, and in the summer. And one of the things that we're really looking at through the Health and Safety team is how do we ensure that our schools are just as safe and just monitored after school during those busy hours as they are during the day? Because we do a really awesome job during the day, but there's thousands of people in and out of our schools on any day during the afternoon after the school day. And so, we're really trying to think, how do we, how do we expand our safety and security to make sure that the facility is secure and safe? So, here's just a few of the recent improvements. I know that there are many, many more. I was just trying to kind of think about each phase level. Some of the things that we're really excited about this year is the reinstating of the Advisory Program at the high school. So, every student at the high school has advisory once a week. And then, they have an academic enrichment and support time on the other days in the week where they can either tag a teacher for support or enrichment, or a teacher can tag them for support and enrichment. And I know that the high school is monitoring the implementation of that this year, but they're also asking questions like, how can we do it even better to ensure that all of our students are getting not only the academic support that they need, but also the social, emotional support? And really, we're thinking about how do we educate our kids around some of the challenging social issues that we're navigating as adults? And what does it look like for them? And how can we provide those supports? So, the middle school also has an advisory period during their homeroom where they're doing much the same. And this year, they did add a new program called the Bridge Program, which offers support to students in transition or who just need a little extra guidance.
Usually due to health concerns, I tend to respond to questions.
Thank you, Barb. At the Wentworth Intermediate School, this year, that we brought onboard an additional STEM teacher. So, now, all of the students here at Wentworth have STEM year long. And that has been a really huge asset. And we're really trying to make sure that we use the building to its full capacity, or to its full, yeah, full capacity. And also, Kelly's made some adjustments and is thinking creatively about the schedule. We're trying to create as many opportunities as we can for our kids during the day. And they want to be engaged in doing a lot during the day. So, it's always a tricky balance of trying to squeeze out every minute of the day and making sure that it's meaningful for our kids. Some big work that we've been doing over the last two years is work around literacy in grades K through five. And Monique has really been leading this up with our instructional coaches. We're in year two with the writing and writer's workshop and year one with reader's workshop. And so, there's some really good work happening and lots of celebrations as classes need to get to the end of the unit. And here at Wentworth today, I was up in the red wing hanging out with some sort of creators during indoor recess. And I noticed some of their writing that was on display. It was Beauty and the Beast. And so, it was like their edited versions. They had like crossed out and hidden some cutouts and paper taped together and inserted in as their draft. And then, they have this really polished published piece that was typed up. And so, it was really pretty remarkable to see kind of their thinking in progress as I read some of their work. Which is one of the kind of tidbits of what we're doing. We just wrapped up an hour of code also, which I know Monique could probably share a few things about that. But amazing, amazing things happening in our schools every day. This list could go on for, for days, for sure. Any other new items, leadership, that you want to highlight?
I think the work that we're doing on curriculum and the movement to have our big accomplishment states and the work.
Yes. And I'm going to ask, but I might have listed that under a challenge. I might have listed that under a challenge, but I'm definitely going to talk about that. What Catherine was just saying is that on K twelve, we've been doing a lot of work around identifying learning goals and learning targets that are aligned to the standards as we aim towards a proficiency-based learning system. Thank you for adding that. And the high school, of course, you've heard a lot about this, is going through a NEA self-study, which is going to be an essential piece to us thinking about where, what are we doing well at the high school? And where are we ready to go? And that really is taking a lot of our time in professional development. And the staff and the leaders are learning a lot through that process.
We do not know what NEA is.
NEA, okay. I'm not going to remember exactly what it stands for. A NE, New England Accreditation.
New England Association of Schools and Colleges.
New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And what it is, is we take this year to do a self-study. There are seven standards that teacher leaders, along with leadership, are examining our practices. Everything from mission, vision, values to curriculum, looking at assessment practices. We're also looking at instructional practices, community support, assessments. Really, it's basically just a self, a self audit. And then, we'll have a visiting team come next year and they'll spend three days with us going over and kind of noticing for themselves. And then, they'll take some time to look at our self audit, look at their timings and the evidence that they see during their visit. And they'll create a report that will show some highlights of what we're doing well and also help support areas where we need to grow. So, our accomplishments recently, you might have noticed that, I believe it was the Portland Press Herald had listed, you know, kind of like the top ten school districts based on the latest NAIA assessment, which our students took in the spring of two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And so, we were really proud to notice that Scarborough was in the top ten for both E.L.A. and science. And we were like right on the edge for math. So, it really helps reinforce to our teachers that all of their hard work and all of the effort that they're putting in is being realized in the outcomes of our students in one way that we measure success, which is the state test. Of course, that's not the only way that we measure state test, um, student success. The anecdotal evidence, the observational evidence that we see on a day-to-day basis. The anecdotal evidence, the observational evidence that we see on a day-to-day basis is really much more powerful than just that, but it still felt really good to see them running up there in the top 10. We are officially a one-to-one district. So we are one-to-one from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. This has been a huge effort and something that we should all be really proud of as a community. And under Jen's leadership, we have been able to have Chromebooks rolled out this year at K2. And we also have laptops available for students all the way up through their 12th grade. The students only take their devices home from seventh grade on up. So the other times, they're here in school, and they're using them to enhance their learning throughout the instructional day. I talked a little bit about this schedule. At the high school, we're in year one of a two-year phase-in of a brain schedule so that academic enrichment and advisory period was this year. Next year, we'll be looking at moving to an eight-year, an eight-period schedule. Again, the goal behind all of this is how do we create more opportunities for our kids? How do we let them take the classes and also the enrichment courses that they need and want so that they can graduate from Scarborough High School, not just with a transcript book, but with a resume? So we're excited about that work. A big part of the work that the Scarborough Public Schools has been doing much before I arrived is focusing on developing a student-centered learning system. And this really is the center of all the work that we do. We have one core question that we're always asking ourselves as we're making decisions, is it what's best for our kids? And having this student-centered learning system brings us back to that and reminds us what each of our roles are in that work. What's the role of the parent in a student-centered learning system? What's the role of the teacher? What's the role of the student? And what's the role of the community in supporting those students? And so there's lots of really good work happening around this idea that, you know, the students are the center of our work. We've also been discovering ways to better evaluate our own practice as we make these decisions, and as our teachers are working in their classrooms, collaborating around their lesson planning, and trying to continually improve their practice. And so that's our performance evaluation and professional growth plan. I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that our plan is a model that the state has been using and sharing with other districts. So I'm really proud of all of the leaders who worked on that plan and put the effort into not only put the plan together, because that's step one, but trying to make sure that it's really implemented and that there's ongoing professional development that supports developing clarity and understanding. So as a leadership team, we are now looking at, how do we calibrate our feedback and our expectations so that our teachers are getting consistent, evidence-based feedback that will help them just become better each and every day? So some of the challenges, we are up against a tight deadline to implement proficiency-based diploma requirements for all of our incoming freshmen, which will be the class of 2021. In the first year of the phase-in, we are required to ensure that we have proficiency-based expectations clearly articulated to students and families in the four core areas, so English, language arts, math, science, technology, and social studies. And then in year two, it feels like they're, we're phasing this in, but the reality is in year two, you have the four core, and then students get to choose one other area where they're also being, that's also competency-based or proficiency-based or mastery-based. These words are used interchangeably. You might even hear some people call it standard-based. All kind of getting at the same thing, that we really want to ensure that it's clear what kids need to learn and do in order to reach mastery. And by saying that year one is the four core, and then year two is the four core plus one, the reality is all of our teachers have to be ready for this work, because we won't know what students are choosing for their ones. And then year three says four core plus two, year four says four core plus three, year five says four core plus, well, all eight, it says all eight. So, but the reality is our teachers are really gearing up with the curriculum work that Catherine was talking about, because that is the most important part of this work, to ensure that their assessments are aligned to the standards, that their teaching is aligned to their standards, and that they're creating scales and rubers for kids that are really transparent, and they can monitor their own success. That gets back to the student-centered piece of the work that we're doing. And so that's big work for us, and it's an intense timeline, but we're up for the challenge. We're working really, really hard to get there and I'm confident that we will. Part of that challenge is not having enough time. I've never heard of a school district anywhere that said they had enough time to do all of the work that they have on their plate. But we really are stretching our staff to their limits, and this is really important work that should be done. If not, we're not doing, we're not making the proficiency-based transition because the state said so. That clearly gives a sense of urgency, but we're doing it because it is the right work. If we had our own framework, we would do it in a slightly different way. But the time is what's most important. And so someone asked me the other day, like if I thought that this should be something that was up for discussion, that this should be derailed, or that we should, you know, teach a different course with this work? And my honest answer, I don't know if I'm speaking fairly, is that no. I think that it's the right work, and that as long as we know it won't be perfect, and we know that it's going to be a brilliant experience for all of us, teachers, leadership staff, you know, students included, then I do think we should stay the course. But what I would love to see is that we're getting more support so that we can really do it the right way. I think you've probably heard of some districts who are doing it well, and some who, you know, probably wish they were doing it better. We're trying to learn from all of that as we do this work in Scarborough and really making sure that the student-centered learning is what guides all of our improvement efforts. One of the things we'll talk more about is our aging facilities here at Scarborough. So our middle school is 20 years old this year, and we have, what you may or may not know, but I know Jen will talk more about this, is that we have some temporary, so they're called temporary facilities, where all of our sixth-grade students receive all of their instruction in modular units. Those modular units are put on site the day the school opens. They've been there the whole entire time. And right now, we're kind of at the point where we're asking questions that sound like, are we replacing modulars with modulars? And so that's partly what Jen's going to be talking about. I know what mine is, so that would be. And then also, all of our K2 facilities, all of our primary schools also have modular units as part of their core instructional space. A little different with those, they are attached to the building, so I think sometimes people forget that they're still temporary facilities, and we're using every inch of those facilities. And they really are inadequate in order for our teachers to teach the way they need to in the 21st century, because there's very little collaboration space. The gyms are like multi-purpose cafeteries, museums. So our teachers are awesome because they make it work, and you would never hear a teacher complain about the facilities that they had in Scarborough. But if we really want to prepare our students for a competitive world, we need to make sure that they have the facilities and that we can do that. And then, of course, scheduling is always a challenge. We're always trying to estimate and rethink and reinvent and reallocate time so that we can make sure that our schedules show what our priorities are. So it should be that anyone else in the street could pick up a schedule at any one of our schools and take a look at it and know what's most important to us. So our principals are already, believe it or not, thinking about schedules for next year and working with their teachers to start developing them. Do you know this, Catherine? So some of our needs, and I put that out there just so that, you know, we're starting to build the conversation, and you know that there's no surprises and that we're really thoughtful about our needs when we begin to develop our budget. So we need to really think about how do we support our existing academic programs? How do we support new academic programs and pathways? During my kind of listening and learning and connecting tour when I came to the district, which is still really going on, I'm often asked about more technical education opportunities for our kids. And I think I can speak for our leadership team when I say that we all believe that we need to think a little bit differently about what we're able to offer our kids, but that requires resources. We would love to create pathways that allow students to discover what they're passionate about or learn what they're not so passionate about, and really have that opportunity to fail forward. But we're also thinking about how do students leave us ready for college, career, and life? And we believe that that means we should be creating opportunities for enrollment, that we should be creating opportunities for students to earn certifications in different fields so that when they leave here, they have that resume that Monique always talked about and that we're always thinking about, because that's really going to propel them for success. So we're, but all of this requires resources, right? And then, of course, the staffing and the schedules to support that, and not just some redundant, but resources to support, so instructional resources and materials. So if we wanted to create, let's say, for example, a health services pathway, because we know that by 2020, there's going to be a demand for 3.4 million health service providers, that's nurses, O Ts, P Ts, speech therapists. That requires equipment. You know, we need to have medical equipment in order to have pathways like that. And the same is we were to offer an IT pathway or a business pathway or a finance pathway or a hospitality pathway. So those are some of the things that we're thinking about, and will definitely be explored more as we begin to develop a strategic plan in the upcoming years. Of course, time, you know, I'll always be saying that we need more time, but the reality is when you look at the countries around the world that are really, really successful, one of the glaring differences is teacher prep time versus teacher's work, direct instruction time. So when you look at the workload across these countries, and even if you're paying attention to what's happening across the nation, there's really been a push to give teachers more time to actually get together and talk about these complex shifts that are occurring in our field, and to make sure that we're on the cutting edge of the best curriculum practices, instructional practices, assessment practices. And that's going to be so important for us as we're making this shift to professional and learning practices, because it's different. It does look different, it requires a different amount of planning, it requires thinking with our students in a different way, and so time is going to be the number one resource for us. And then, of course, making sure that we have the right analytic tools to ensure that we're making strategic, evidence-based decisions. We're not short on having data and tools. We have lots of data. It's a matter of having the right tools to make that data interactively useful so that it can drive our decision-making. Whether it's a classroom teacher trying to decide what her kids know and what they're ready to learn, or it's a, you know, one of our directors trying to decide what's the best next step for us and the programming for our kids, or it's me and Janice thinking about, you know, what are the resources and how are we going to prioritize them, because we have to make tough choices. Those analytic tools are going to be really important. So when we look at our budget, this is our FY '17 operating budget. Not to go deep into the numbers this time, but just to give you a sense, I think everyone knows or has heard us say that the bulk of our budget, 75% of our budget goes to salary expenses and wages. And we all know what's happening with health services, and we all know that people are going to get raises every year. So this continues to be, you know, the biggest piece of our budget. So what we're doing is, the leadership team is trying to be really, really strategic about how we hire, who we recruit, how we recruit, who we hire, what are those skills that we're looking for, and then how do we retain them by making sure that they're continually nourished as professionals and getting the support that they need to be successful. And so it's a huge part of our budget, but it's a huge part of the time that we invest in our people as well. And then, of course, the debt service is the next piece of the pie, and then you have, that's followed up by the general pool of supplies and equipment, and you can see how it's picking up from there. So the reality is that, I guess, if my math is accurate, about 82% of our budget is predetermined, maybe more. Kate, what would you say? 90? 90% of the budget is predetermined by these fixed costs that we know are coming at us every year. So it's hard to be really innovative with that little bit of flexibility that we do have, but we're making it happen. Some of the key issues or key tasks that we'll be tackling in the next coming months is clarifying our mission, vision, values, and goals. And that's really just something that is done annually in healthy organizations. It's going to be really important to us as we start to develop our long-range strategic plan for the future of Scarborough Public Schools. Our current improvement plan expires in April, so we're right now looking at what, how did we, what were our targets this year and in the past, in the past month according to the 24-month plan? Where are we in meeting those targets? And the reality is that many of those targets will continue into our next strategic plan because we're on the right path and we're doing the right work. It just might look a little different or be packaged a little different. One of the other things that we're working hard on is adjusting start times to align with research-based recommendations. So we're at the point where we no longer have to debate if adjusting the start time is good for our kids. Now we're really just trying to figure out how to make it happen. And so we have a team of internal folks who are looking deeply at that, and we plan to in the next coming months, survey the community, and also do a transportation audit to make sure that we're making the most informed decision in that process. So I know many people are wanting to know where we are with that. We're working hard this coming, and we'll continue to keep you updated after our next meeting. We're also looking at employee recruitment and retainment. This is really huge for us in Scarborough. When we looked at the analysis of our own collective bargaining agreement for our teachers, which includes nurses and guidance and a few other folks, I'm not going to remember everyone, but what we noticed was that in analyzing our human resource data, that over 12% of our staff has retired today, and another 5.6% will be ready to retire in the next five years. And so that's almost 20% of our staff. And we're not alone. If you look at the state of Maine as a whole, 18% of the teaching workforce in Maine will retire in the next five years. So we're really thinking about how are we going to be competitive so that as those new teachers are coming out of school or as people are ready to make shifts and changes, that Scarborough is at the top of their list. So that's really important for us. Also, ESEA is the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. The good news about ESEA, which stands for Every Student to See Pass, is that it's going to be less federal control and more state and local control. One of the, one of the key factors is the accountability factor. So we will still have our state test, and that will count as a portion of our accountability factor, but then there's this thing called the other factor. And right now, there's a team of superintendents who are working with the Department of Ed to define what that other factor might look like. Back in October, when we were at the Maine School Board Association Conference, we unanimously, as a group of superintendents in the state of Maine, adopted a resolution, just to kind of get the conversation started, that allows for four different pathways towards graduation at varying levels. Not just academic performance indicators, but career indicators and life indicators. And so I'm, I'm super excited about this work. I can't wait to see what the final decisions will be, but I think that, again, I'm sure it will be perfect, but I do think that we're heading in the right direction, and it's really good work. And then, of course, you're hearing about this all over the state of Maine, is that proficiency-based education is what the Department of Ed calls it. It's the implementation of the proficiency-based graduation requirements, which that's just a piece of it. It's really about the student-centered learning component and ensuring that we're assessing students in a proficiency-based way that's aligned to the standards that have been defined by the state. Just a few things, um... And then, the bills that are on the horizon, I don't have a crystal ball, and I'm not 100% sure what's coming down the pike. I'm hoping that our legislators here tonight can give us a little insight. But these are some of the things through, in collaboration with MSMA, I was able to kind of brainstorm that I think are going to have some impact on us. So I just wanted to, as we wrap up here, talk- So I just wanted to, as we wrap up here, talk a little bit about these, but then turn it over to having a conversation about what you think is coming our way and how we can partner together to, you know, let you know what it feels like or how it's going to impact us and what it means for our kids when these decisions are being made. So the first one is local control of student transfers. And so currently in Maine, if a family moves out of the town they live in, you only have to go to school in the town where you live and pay taxes. But if a family moves out of town and they want their child to be able to remain in the school district that they're already in, they can ask for a superintendent's agreement. And so when that happens, the parent writes a request, the superintendent talks about it and we talk about all the different factors that are contributing to why this family might be making this request and then we decide what's best for the student. When I first came to Maine, I didn't know anything about this because in Massachusetts, if you wanted to go to school in a different county, pay tuition. So it's a little different here. But what I think is surprising is that recently, the recent history shows that the Department of Ed is overturning local decisions at like an unprecedented rate. So in 2015-16, last school year, the Commissioner's Office overruled local superintendents 189 times on student transfers. Only 12 appeals that went through the Commissioner's Office were actually denied. So the people who know the student, know the family, know the situation are making the recommendation based on what's best for kids because remember, that's why Maine exists. But yet, the Governor, the Commissioner's Office is overturning those superintendent decisions. And so the, I guess, the most ironic part of this, as I was learning about this, I was like, what is this superintendent's agreement thing? Is I learned that about 92% of all student transfers are approved, but are approved at the local level. So the ones that aren't getting approved, it's for reasons and usually it's because it's not what's best for the family or what's best for the student. And so I guess I just make a case to say that it's time that we amend this statute and make it clear that student transfers through superintendent agreements should remain a superintendent and a local decision. So that's one thing that I think will probably be on the horizon, maybe, yes. So call me, I have ideas and opinions about that. Teacher recruitment costs, so as I was mentioning earlier, this is huge. Recently, what happened was that the state shifted. So back in FY '13, the local districts did not pay any of the needs for the charter teacher requirement requirement cost. In FY '14, it was at like, 2.65%. And then in FY '15, it was at 3.36%. And then this year, we're not quite sure where it's going to go.
We have 18% increase, which we put it at 3.97.
3.97. And so obviously, this has a huge impact. Remember that's to the budget pie chart, the biggest piece of our pie. So thank you, Kate, for remembering those numbers. So we need, what really is the question that I'm hearing among the superintendents in Maine is what did it look like before? Like, is it different now? Why is it increasing at such rapid rates and how are we supposed to plan for that? And so what I would ask is that we make the process more transparent and that we're making the rate setting more transparent so that we know what the projected increases are going to be in the future and then we can be good stewards of our money because we can be playful. The other issue that we're noticing are the special education costs in Maine. And so, of course, when we talk about the budget, special education is a key driver. We have a legal and ethical obligation to fund special ed fully every year. That's the number one priority. So no matter what the costs are, that gets funded first. And then all of the other needs are funded after that, but that's our priority. In the last 10 years, special ed costs have been going up 46%. And there are a whole variety of reasons why they're going up at that rapid rate. But what we need to do is find ways to control these costs whilst still delivering the services to the students who will need them. So, you know, an idea might be to put a task force together and include special educators, include advocates to sit at the table and put together and talk about why the costs are rising so rapidly in their districts and then also suggest in a way that we can try to control these costs. The biennial budget, I'm still learning about this being moved to Maine, but I'm just wondering what's on the horizon for school funding. This year, GPA went up about $15 million, but not all schools benefited from that. Some schools got less money than they did the year before and others were essentially flat-funded. And so what we know is that when you're flat-funded, you're actually experiencing a budget cut because those time-controlled costs, the biggest pieces of the pie, are going up whether the money's coming or not. And that requires us to go back to our taxpayers to pick up the slack. So, you know, this is a big conversation in Maine about how we're going to adequately fund education and I just wanted to hear from you maybe a little bit about what you think is coming so that we can start to plan and think about our strategy in the upcoming budget season. Question two, this referendum promised an additional $157 million for schools, but what's becoming unclear or what's increasingly unclear is when that money is going to come and when it comes, how it will be distributed. So what I think is important for everyone to understand is that we're definitely not seeing it this year. I believe that the best case scenario is that we would see it in 2018, 19, if we see it at all here in Scarborough. And so I'm just wondering if there will be legislation to implement the referendum and do you anticipate the increased revenue will offset, will be offset by cuts to traditional state funding? Just a few questions to add. So I do want to open it up for some dialogue and discussion, but I do, I just want to say again how important it is that we partner and we truly co-labor around this work because as you've heard, there's a lot to do, there's a lot of unknowns, but I do believe that when we work together towards common goals, our kids will benefit from that. So again, I thank you for being here and I open it up to questions.
Can I suggest that we go back to the slide that had all of the legislative issues and maybe we take each one of them one at a time and give some feedback from those?
All right. I'm on the Education Committee. I haven't been in control 100% of them going back, but I think that would be a good surprise to everybody that's been, certainly would invite, you know, the legislature to probably indicate whether they'd like to talk about local control of student transfers or want me to just jump in because this is something that we have been dealing with in the Education Committee and I'm not sure how much you guys have really been hearing about this.
Could I add something before you start? So the other day, I had a great, no day, I had a great meeting with Karen and Amy and we accidentally met for like three hours, I think. We were having such a great discussion. But one of the things that I really, that really resonated with me and that I learned was that each of our legislators are on their own committee. And so Karen is on the Health and Human Services Committee. She becomes the expert on these issues for that committee. And Amy helped me with your committee's official title.
May for Commerce, Research, and Economic Development, as well as Judiciary.
All of that. So Amy becomes an expert with all of that and Rebecca is the Education Committee, so she becomes the expert with that. But what Senator Volker, Representative Ashan said to me that I thought was so impactful and I'm sure all of you know this, but that when it comes time for them to vote, they have to choose this up or down. And so if we're not reaching out and we're not having conversations and dialogue about these issues, then you're making decisions based on what the committee is mostly recommending unless you have some information that is different. And so that just for me was affirmation of why we need to work together and have a partnership. So I just wanted to add that before you went.
I would just add on to that, that really your input should not wait until it's on the floor for an up or down vote for the Senate and the House. By then, any sort of changes that happen are pretty rare, pretty challenging and take a lot of effort to make any sort of substantial change to the way the report has come out of the Education Committee. But it's good for you to communicate with all the legislators about how you feel about the legislation, but if you want to have an impact on what actually is going to be voted on, you really need to get in there for the public hearing on whatever particular bill it is. Definitely reach out to me and let me know what your concerns are so that when we are having a public hearing, I can ask good questions of whomever is presenting that bill and who is saying that this is the right thing to do or this is the bad thing to do. And then also keep that in mind as we're going through the work session on the bill. That is where a lot of our legislative work happens. By the time it hits the chamber, it's pretty rare that if we, each of our committees really work hard to get to unanimous decisions because that means the bill is going to move forward and pretty much reach a positive conclusion or negative, yea or nay. If they're divided reports, if there's not a lot of agreement, those bills are pretty much going to die. So we're doing, we spend a lot of time in committee having really in-depth conversations, trying to reach common ground. And so that is the time to massage the bill in a way that you think would be most favorable for Scarborough schools or beyond.
If I can ask, so four of the five items are budget-related, pretty much. So the question I have is that is it more effective to reach out to the individual legislator that's on an individual committee or to the legislator that's on appropriations?
Both. Because the Education Committee will report to the Appropriations Committee what it has voted on and what is agreed to. If the Education Committee has voted unanimously to support whatever that line item is, the Appropriations Committee, for the most part, is going to say, okay, that's solid, unless it's really controversial. The teacher retirement cost is probably one of them. We've been pretty unanimous as a committee that we resisted as much as we could to pass in on of those costs to our local school districts and we lost that fight. So I would say both, but certainly make sure the Education Committee knows what it is that you would like and then we can work with you to share that with the Appropriations Committee as well.
Each committee goes over the budget for their areas of jurisdiction. So Education will go over the educational line items either with the Department of Labor, D C D line items, they go over all the Health and Human Services line items. And then that we actually go into and have a joint session with Appropriations going through our various budgets. So we literally go through notebooks and look at the areas of disagreement.
So to summarize, it leaves one person's opinion. I hope that every single one of you supports education and increases funding in every one of those four areas.
So we've been, we were made very aware by the Superintendent's Association about the overriding of the local decisions and the extent of which it was happening. Recognizing the political situation that's been in existence in Augusta, we have to come to a common ground and get something passed that would survive a potential veto. What we put in place was the appeal process. And first, it was appeal to the Commissioner. Actually, I think that was always in statute. What we then said was, okay, the Commissioner wasn't having anything, was just not going to support any appeals. It was no, 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 no. And we said, okay, that's not working. So we added the State Board of Education as well. It was at another, another level. MSMA is very good and MSSA and all of those, MSBA, they're there every day in our committee. They will let us know whether it's working or not. And so if you're telling me that they're talking about legislation and obviously it's not working, we will have that conversation again.
It does look as though we're going to have potentially a new Commissioner.
We have an acting Commissioner and that acting Commissioner has that authority. That's what's been happening, right, I believe. Whoever is that acting Commissioner is the one making, signing off. Now, whether that acting Commissioner is actually making the decision over the past whatever number of months, that's up for speculation. Nobody really knows. But yeah, certainly recent events with Mr. Beersley's retirement, or, yeah, I don't know what to call it, but things will be shifting again, but honestly, I've been there four years. I do not speculate as to what will be happening next. My hope is, and I think everybody's hope is, that we will get a Commissioner who's been vetted through the Education Committee and confirmed by the Senate. It's a large part of our budget. There's a lot of incredible work, as we've all heard, that's going on statewide around education. And to not have a Commissioner over this period of time has really hamstrung our schools, our leaders, our teachers, the department itself. So I'm hopeful, but I don't, I don't know.
So no need to be too strong, Kate, for instability.
No, we know. We've had this conversation multiple times.
It's a huge distraction. I'm New to Maine, but it takes over every conversation that we're trying to have, every effective conversation. At least you might. Sure.
Do any board members have specific questions about local control or superintendent's decisions?
These folks know that I serve on the Maine School Board Association Board of Directors, so I've been involved. And it's extremely important to me and always has been that our legislators think of Scarborough first and help us through the process. And it is not an easy job to be an elected official at any level, at any level. And I think as the superintendent has said, if we can work closely together to benefit our students in our town, then we're all going to be winners, especially the children. But over the last several years, we have been fortunate in Scarborough that we have a town council who is amenable to supporting education because they've had to absorb, for example, a million dollars just in teacher retirement fund. A million dollars over the last two years, that's a chunk of money for a town our size for around 3,000 children. Could do a lot of good if our schools. So I'm going to be at the legislature and I'm going to be talking to people and, you know, we don't always agree, but that's how we're going to get things done. We've got to work together, but we've got to listen to each other as well. And I think that's an accomplishment just within our reach. Thank you. Thank you for coming, by the way.
I would just offer an observation on the local controlled student transfer issue. In my former role at South Carolina Graduate, I oversaw 16 print school sites and that included, that sign language was 10 or 11 in the district. So I worked with superintendents in all those districts and our students were all students who were students promised. And sometimes those students promised ended up in that exact scenario. Either there was a divorce with family situation, we all know there's a lot of these in July, student transfer requests are given. For me, the observation I would just offer is that the perception was that it wasn't consistent between districts. So where one district might- So where one district might, the parameters weren't really clearly defined for parents and, or at least with their perception. Again, a perception is often someone's reality. So I think it would be helpful if there were some consistency amongst districts as to when and why they decide to keep a student and why they, because you are a guest. You are the ones that have the relationship with those kids and their families. So it would be helpful for them to know when you're keeping their kid, why, and when a student isn't necessarily able to stay, also why. And so what I saw over those 11 districts is a lot of inconsistency. And so I think when you pass that, and I wouldn't point a finger either way, because I think everybody wanted to do the right thing, but it was more about the perception.
Yeah, so sorry if I could just get an opinion from our state representatives and senators. The passage of question two is the second time in recent years that voters of the state of Maine has suggested that they would like the legislature to fund education at 55%. I was wondering if you guys could weigh in on just kind of the timing and implementation of that?
I think it's hard to say. My personal opinion on question two is that it's going to result in a net loss of revenue within five years for the state. I think it's potentially devastating for our economy, for our medical care professionals. I was at Maine Med yesterday and they said that there were at least three doctors that they knew of that declined contracts after the passage of question two. I think it's extremely dangerous personally. So I think it's hard to say.
Kind of, you know, the Health and Human Services Committee, we have a huge problem with network, networking provider in our state. We are losing our doctors. We do not have a student psychiatrist nor a vein doctor. This passage of this question, I believe strongly it's going to decimate our doctors' network and number of doctors in our state. I have a huge concern for the passage of this question. Voters of Scarborough actually voted against it. So I think we do need to pay attention to that.
A couple comments. I agree that it is the frequent surcharge is the best option probably for our healthcare professionals. But I think the underlying result of that question passing statewide, because we talked a lot about Scarborough during the budget and we're told we have to look statewide. So it's hard to pick and choose when we can look just locally and make decisions versus when we can look statewide and make decisions. But I think the fact that it passed, and that's the will of the people, is that they want the state to fund education at 55%. So instead of just saying it's going to kill our doctors in the state, is there a way to look at it creatively where, okay, so can we get to the 55%, but maybe it's not the 3% surcharge? Maybe there's another way. Because the people have obviously decided that they want education funded at 55%. This is the second time, it's been 12 years, right?
It's pretty moral margin, number one. But number two, I agree with you, we do need to honor that. And I think, you know, there's certainly willingness to do that. And, but, you know, the question is how, given the other priorities around the state and the fact that now we're losing all of the income tax revenues from people that are paying a high amount of our taxes already. So...
Yeah, and if someone leaves and they earn $500,000 a year, how do you replace that?
But that's what I'm saying, how can we do it creatively?
Right. I'm open to that conversation.
Instead of saying it only passed marginally, which shows me that you're sort of like, I'm...
No, I'm open to the conversation for sure.
I think we need to look at it creatively.
So I'd like to take a step back because we're kind of venturing down a political conversation, frankly. Some people supported it, some people didn't, some people voted for it, some people didn't. But the fact of the matter is that this is going to go into statute. It will take affirmative action by the legislature to change the statute that would be put in place by the passage of this referendum. That's the reality. And so there's a lot of questions that I heard about, is this, will this balance cuts to state funding? Will we ever see any money, et cetera, et cetera? So I'd like to answer some of the more process-oriented parts of what you see as on the horizon. This, the language of the referendum says that this is to go to the schools and only the schools for student support and instruction. And this is important. It is not going to, it's not allowed to go to administrative costs. It's very specific about that. It is, there is supposed to be a separate fund set up by the Treasurer's Office to manage whatever additional revenues are generated by this surcharge. And it is to be directed specifically to this. Are there people already clamoring for redirecting some of those funds? Absolutely. I've, someone just within the last week made a comment to me and I was just like, really? Already? But, you know, I think everybody, as legislators, we have to be very clear about what the intent of the referendum was, what the intent of the statute language is. The Advisor's Office will be putting this into place. I mean, that's what we have to work around. So $150 million, what does that mean for Scarborough? Based on last year's valuation, which will have nothing to do with the valuation in two years from now, so please take this with a huge boulder of salt.
Lose the money.
Okay? Amy, can you just let me finish? Thank you. Based on last year's valuation, Scarborough would receive about $2.5 million in additional funding. Why do some states, why do some districts receive more money, some get flat funds, some lose? I apologize, ad nauseam, you've been over this, but we have new faces here, I believe. It's because Scarborough's valuation fluctuates in relation to every other school district's valuation. And it's Scarborough's valuation is going up and you have other districts across the state that are in distress and going down. There's a reallocation. It's painful, but, you know, I have represented districts for years now that continue to kind of get hit in the chin. And it's not pleasant. But it's also not pleasant to talk to folks from Skowhegan, Rumford, all of these other places across the state of Maine that are really in a lot of pain. And so as a legislator, I'm trying to balance what is necessary for Scarborough, but what also is necessary for the health of all of Maine, I mean, all of Maine's kids. So my, you know, so this fund, this money will raise the overall level of the water. So I don't, you know, heaven forbid we have another, some more seismic economic shifts that happen, but I think we're kind of like right here right now. And so there should be some more money coming Scarborough's way. The last thing I would want to say is, some people say, well, Scarborough's getting so much more money than the rural districts in Maine. Yes, in hard dollars it is. That's because Scarborough has more students. And percentage increases, rural districts that are suffering and are experiencing property valuation decreases, they are receiving anywhere from 400% increases, 300% increases, 200% increases. It's big, big percentage increases. So my father is a mathematician and he has always said to me is, numbers are funny. You can torture them to say anything that you want. But for me, those are two important things to remember.
So Senator, the question I have is that, so if this is the main topic, you explained the question about state funding and what's with the DED buyback. What says that this legislature arrangement to buyback is what has been passed?
Right. It is going to depend on whether the current sitting legislators abide by the referendum that was passed. I'm pretty sure that the legislation and/or the governor's budget will try to undo it. So you're right. You're right. There's nothing to stop it.
So I'd like to approach it a little bit from a municipal as well as a state approach. A budget really is just a reflection of a community's priority. So, you know, everybody is, would love to have an unlimited supply of resources, but I think in essence what we're talking about, I think the gist of the conversation is that the, certainly the people of the state of Maine and in Scarborough as well, want education funding to be a priority. And I think that what I would be hoping from our legislative contingent is that you would respect that requirement and make that a higher priority, let's say, than some of the other things on the plate because I think by establishing that as a higher priority, I think we'll be able to come up with some pretty reasonable solutions. I don't think anybody's asking for a full meal ticket to be punched. But I think if you look at the, you know, we've already said from a municipal and a school board perspective, we understand we're a Southern Maine community and we're a contributing community, but it needs to be proportional and it needs to be fair. And I think in recent history, it's been pretty clear at some statistical standpoint that Scarborough's very readily lost, you know, for three or four years out of the last five, we're the biggest loser in the state. And I understand why, but when you see similar communities around us that maybe aren't being hit as dramatically as that, there's got to be some mechanism or some way to try and make the process a little bit more fair. And I think to your point, Senator Millet, the argument that one group is getting more than the other, my understanding is, is the slices of the pie doesn't change, it's just the pie's bigger. So if Scarborough is getting 2.7% or 3% or whatever it was of the whole allocation, we're still only getting that allocation, but the pie's bigger. So by the reverse mathematical formula, we then, if we lost the most going in, we're probably going to gain a lot more coming out than some of the other districts. So I would just encourage you as legislators to keep that in mind, that there are a lot of priorities. I understand Health and Human Services has their priorities, Labor has their priorities, Education has their priorities. But I think, you know, the important thing to remember is that as a community, we put education as a high priority. We certainly do it on the municipal side of the budget as well. And whatever short gap or whatever shortfall is, happens on the state side, we have to look at as a community, do we want to make that difference up here?
Yeah. And just so you know, when the state does not fund 55% in the budget, they rewrite statute to say, okay, the state's only going to fund 47% and then they rewrite the statute for the mill rate required. Right? So basically what it's doing is it's shifting from state revenue to property taxes. So, and that was a lot of the driver behind the original 55% referendum and I think continues to be. Couple things. In terms of creative solutions and how to get to 55%, in the four years that I've been on the Education Committee, where we have, as a group, to various degrees advocated for additional state funding to try to get us to 55%, we've considered major wins when we get 15 million, 20 million increase. And that's not keeping up with the cost, overall increase in cost of education. And that's after just relentless advocating and trying to find common ground. So when we talk about what can we do to create 150 million in a different way, it's something to kind of keep in mind, that each year we're like, woo-hoo, we got $20 million. Last thing. There's a commission formed by the governor, the Blue Ribbon Commission. And I think you should know that there's some discussions happening around the essential programs and services formula and making changes to it. And, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of ways to describe what it's going to look like. There's a proposal that's been put forward by the former Commissioner Jim Reyer that would make a further adjustment to economically disadvantaged students for districts within enrollment ranges. So if you had between zero and, I'm making these numbers up, 600, you would get adjustment of .01 per student. If you have between 600 and 1,200, you would get this. I have some serious concerns about that. I don't think Scarborough would fare well in relation to other districts that have higher economically disadvantaged students. So I'm doing what I can to be supportive of the idea that yes, we still, we're not, the formula is probably not fully accounted for, those extra costs in dealing with economically disadvantaged students, but there are other ways that could be more equitable and wouldn't require, and wouldn't result in further pain for districts like Scarborough, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth. There's also discussion around special education costs. Betsy Webb, who's the superintendent from Bangor, made a presentation about a program that they've recently started where there's some joint sharing of a special ed, high needs facility as a way to try to save some costs. This needs to be, from my personal perspective, has to be treated very carefully because we have gone from a very isolated special education environment to the mainstreaming all, you know, inclusive environment. And from my perspective is we don't want to swing back. And Betsy, and Superintendent Webb, to her credit, is very sensitive to that. She assured me that the students that are there, the parents are really happy that their kids are there, they're being served very well. So that is some innovation discussion that's happening around special education. And I'll try to make sure that everybody is, but you guys all should be following the Blue Ribbon Commission reports that are coming out because there's some pretty interesting things happening.
Thank you so much. I wanted to just ask for any final comments as you transition through our update with the Department of Commerce.
Yeah, I want to make so and. I want to make sure that board members have a chance if you have any questions before. I mean, obviously the superintendent's overview is our priority list and our priorities, but I didn't know if anyone had any other specific questions while everyone is in front of us.
I would just, one last thing is, we actually don't know what's coming down the pipe yet in terms of legislation affecting education because they're still secret. The Advisor's Office doesn't share titles, doesn't share anything about what's out there. So we can't really...
So when do you know, because you mentioned, you know, sharing our opinions and connecting with you as soon as possible, when's the timeframe that we can start to have this conversation?
I would encourage your office to be on the list, sir, for the Education Committee. So we don't have a, we don't have committees yet. We don't know, I mean, we're all supposedly have an idea, but we have not been told specifically. And because of that, no committee clerks have been hired. And so there's no list, there's nobody to communicate to yet. So what I will do is, we can let you know once the committees are up and running for you to then reach out and say, we would like to be informed of, and you will get roughly 160 emails or more of public hearing notifications.
Yeah, that's the only problem. You might feel a little overwhelmed.
But it's better to know more than less.
Absolutely. And I would like to, if you're open, exchange cell phone numbers before you leave tonight as well so that we can be texting or calling and communicating in that way. So you can help me kind of disperse them, defibrillate them, that would be helpful.
Great.
So Councilwoman Rayburn and I also serve on the Maine Municipal Association's legislative policy committee and we read every bill that comes through, about 1,500 a year that has to do with municipalities. And so I think that we can also be a resource to the board as kind of a heads up. It's, you know... And so I think that we can also be a resource to the board as kind of a heads up if, you want to, if you'd like, I'm happy to share with you the bills that we receive before our meetings. We do have three, excuse the word, but they are lobbyists, that represent municipalities and the, what is municipality, we're all thought to be best in municipalities. School funding is at the top of our list every single year of things to address. 55% certainly is the target number we always want to see. So please do also see myself, I won't speak for Councilwoman Reban, but as a resource for information. I am also happy to be directed by Board Chairman and Board Counsel about how he would like me to be representing Scarborough in that situation and voting towards how we direct our lobbyists in the department.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Okay.
If anyone needs to use the restroom, they can wait straight after.
Yeah. It's been a blast.
I'm sure you are.
Very cold out.
And I'm really, I'm legitimately here.
I know.
I know you are.
So we're very, very happy to be here tonight. We've met with the school committee and community committee.
I hope so.
And since that time, a lot of things have changed and a lot of additional research has been done. The primary handout that I want to go over tonight is this big documented, it's moving through, but most of it is drawings. I made 30 copies thinking, all right, I'll be bringing some of these home, but apparently not many have. So those of you in the audience who don't have it, if you share, then that would be great. Now, some things projected drawings primarily, but the data that we're going to discuss tonight is embodied in this document. So we've been working with the school committee for quite a while now. It's been a very, very interesting process, but at the very, very beginning, they made a, we had meetings where we talked about what the goals about the long-range facilities plan would be. And so on page two of your handout, I'm going to just go through the highlights of that really quickly for those of you who maybe haven't been to some of the earlier meetings. So it started out as a look at the facilities at the same time that you were looking at your 20, 22-month plan to reassess all your educational programs. So facilities and educational programs were linked together, and we were working on the facilities part, but facilities also have to do with education because the rooms and the layout of the buildings and the resources, you know, work or don't work in terms of making it as easy as possible to provide education at the level that you want to. So the goals were to provide a long-range facilities plan to ensure that the facilities were in alignment with your educational goals. Create a technical facility inventory in the Scarborough schools. And we've gone in with engineering and architecture team, we've gone through all the buildings, we've collected all the drawings, we have a pretty good sense about the condition, the physical condition of everything. We also did an educational inventory, we interviewed all the principals, some of them several times. We've looked at whether or not the rooms that they're using meeting state standards or significantly below that and what kinds of difficulties and shortages they may be having. The goal was to eliminate all the modular classrooms in the district. You have 24, you have 12 at the middle school, and then you have another 12 at the primary schools, and that's a lot. So all the studies that we've done have been looking at replacing those modules with permanent space in one way or the other. Updated the Scarborough's population projections. We started out using projections that I think were from 2012, 13, something like that. And those were redone in just January, and there was quite a surprise when those were redone because instead of what the earlier study said that your primary school population was declining, we were actually looking at various options for consolidating schools, closing buildings, that kind of stuff. The latest projection shows it significantly rising, which changed basically every assumption that the school committee and the long-range facilities planning committee had made. And so the data that you're going to see tonight really has to do with that shift in the population, that growth that you're seeing overall and how that might be taken care of. Conduct examination of areas of facility improvement that potentially reduce your cost of operation. This was a big, big deal for the school committee and for the building committee because they wanted to serve your kids in the best way possible, but they wanted to look at ways to do that as efficiently as possible. Facilities are a big potential piece of that. Look at the potential for expanding the middle school, providing educational equity among all the schools. So whether you went to one primary school, another primary school, basically the resources available would be comparable. Improving security. We created drawings of all the buildings in the school department, really for the first time. So you now have really good up-to-date scale drawings to do planning with. Create a system of standards to allow the school department to evaluate facilities objectively. So we've been working with Todd to come up with a series of criteria that everybody can agree on to say whether a facility is really serving you well or whether it's not. And we've been using Department of Ed standards to help in creating that system. Identifying potential funding sources. We're going to talk about applying for Department of Ed funding tonight for your facilities. And then ultimately to create a long and short-term capital improvements plan that'll help you prioritize scarce resources to have the most effect in your schools moving forward. So one of the things we looked at first was building capacity, student enrollment, and then the projections going forward. So if you look at page four of your handout, what it basically says, and again, there's, this is a 45-page distillation of what is now over 100 pages of data, so I invite you to look at it as a bigger report because it has quite a bit of information in there. But when the projections were redone in January of 2016, these are the numbers that came up. I like that I did scrolls.
Clearly you can see it well.
Again, I was thinking we were going to be talking mostly about numbers, which is why we made that handout for everybody. So the first column to look at is the one that says capacity using Scarborough's standards. Every school district has a set of standards that they like to clarify that says that in, let's say, grades K2, that you'd like to keep your class sizes, say, from 16 to 18 perhaps, and then higher grades, more and more students per classroom, because of all the research that's been done that says that you should try to match students per classroom with their age in a way that'll make it best for them in terms of learning. So we used those standards for Scarborough, and we did a, literally a room-by-room inventory of every room in every building in your school department and came up with these numbers. So the Blue Point School has a capacity, I would say a comfortable capacity for 241 kids, eight corners, 236. So if you go down the list for the primary schools together, you have a capacity of about 655 kids in the district. Actual student population right now, you have 594 kids in that grade level. So you're about 9% under capacity. That's a pretty good number. You shouldn't, the closer you get to your capacity, typically what happens, you have more and more and more trouble providing space for all the programs that you need in the building for the kids of all kinds of demographics. So having, you know, 15% extra capacity, something like that, is a good thing, it's not a bad thing. If you've got 30% too much capacity, then you may have more space than you have kids, and you should think about potentially consolidating. And that's where the committee was a year ago because the numbers were dropping significantly. The new projection that was done by Planning Decisions has two models. One of them is called the best fit model, and that's the sort of traditional model where they look at pretty much only at live bursts in the school department. And it's a limited model. In the past, that model has not taken account of a lot of things, especially that happened in the Southern Maine in terms of growth and development, things like that. So the second model that they used in the latest projections is called the new housing model. And in that, Planning Decisions talks to your town planner, and they looked at acreage that was available for development, they looked at building permits and all kinds of other things, and those numbers are higher. And what's interesting is those numbers are right on your actual population. So if you look at row four, the subtotals, you have 594 kids right now in the district at K2, and the projection, new housing projection says you should have 593, so it's a bullseye in terms of projections. This is important because the other thing that the projection shows is that at the end of the 10-year projection fiscal year 2025-26, you'd have 746 kids at the primary school level, and that's about 14% increase over what you have right now. And that's a big number. That's a lot of extra kids. And again, so the whole mindset of the board and the committee was to now look at how you accommodate these additional kids coming forward in the future. If you look down at the bottom row of these numbers, again, the new housing numbers for the entire school district are right on top of the numbers that you're actually experiencing. So we think in general, the first thing to note is that that new housing model is a good tool for you to use in making decisions going forward about what you might do with your facilities. So if you go to page six of your handout, the next thing we looked at was the state of the facilities both from an educational standpoint and from a facility standpoint, just sort of the basic bricks and mortar standpoint. So the first piece of this, that page four, excuse me, page six and seven, talk about the things that we learned both from our school tours and from interviews with the principals and discussions with Todd of all the things that come to his office that he prepared are problematic. So in the primary school and the middle school, again, I won't read through these in detail, but there is a fairly long list of shortages of space that primarily have to do with either not enough rooms for programs or rooms that are too small for programs, or rooms that are inappropriate for programs, or they may have a lack of utilities or plumbing or power, or those kinds of things. But pretty consistently through those four schools, the three primary and the middle school, there are a lot of shortcomings that should be addressed, and they make it harder for teachers to get the work done that they need to because of lack of space. The middle school in particular is acutely crowded. I think Barbara would agree with that. And what's odd is that you have a lot of classroom spaces in the middle school, but 12 of those classrooms are in modules. And then there are corridor spaces in the middle school that are substantially smaller than they should be. The cafeteria, for example, is only 63% of the DOE recommended size for your population, so they have five lunch servings. Is that still true, Barbara?
No, now we're down to three.
Oh, you're down to three?
We use our overflow.
Okay. Okay. So in order to, five lunch servings is, I mean, you start lunch about an hour after the bus has come, and you're eating until, you know, 2:30 in the afternoon. So to take care of that problem, what Barbara has done, there's a big lobby space that runs through the STEM area going through the cafeteria, and they're eating in there. So they're eating in the hallways, basically, which I'm sure has more than one building management problem associated in the day. Special ed spaces seem often to suffer in situations like this when the building's really overcrowded because you start putting functions in rooms like closets or floor storage rooms and things that really just weren't ever designed to be a good place for kids. The other odd thing you have in the middle school is there are these, when you go from the classroom wings to the center of the building, the corridor spaces, you have to pass through this narrow gauntlet. The code says that the absolute minimum width of a corridor in a school, it has to be six feet, and those hallways that are about 30 or 40 feet long, they're at seven feet. And some of those hallways have lockers on one side, so they're actually down to six feet. And so you're pushing a couple hundred kids through that every time classes change, and it's just not a good way to have the school organized. The library is 850 square feet smaller than it should be. The gym is a nice space when you first look at it, but it's not a competition-sized gym. It has a great elevator trap around it, but that elevator trap makes it hard to shoot baskets from the quarters of the court because it actually hangs out over the basketball court. So there's a variety of things that need to be addressed. They have one art room that is 54% of the size of the DOE recommends for an art room. So again, a lot of compromises and pretty creative planning has to be done to make all this possible. Middle school also has, at least in 2015, had five floating teachers, those are teachers who just don't have a classroom, so they spend the day in carts. And wherever, from a scheduling standpoint, there's a room that's empty, they move to that room, teach that class, and the next period they may be in a totally different part of the building. So we look at all that as well, and some of the options that we'll discuss with you today are intended to look at things from the educational facility side as well as trying to accommodate the growth that seems to be moving through your younger grades and presumably they'll end up in your upper grades eventually. On page eight and nine of your handout, I think this is, oh, that is it, okay. We did a table called Classroom and Corridor Space Comparisons. So what we did is we, as I said, we measured every single room in every one of your schools, put it together in a chart, compared this to Department of Ed standards. And again, I want to stress that those standards are pretty conservative. The Department of Ed is not likely to oversize something because they have financial constraints and they've got to have, you know, equity and the money that they give for planning schools from Titeri to Matawaska. And so they've come up with a series of standards that are based on research that they've done nationally, and they're pretty reasonable standards, but they're not overly generous. So meeting the DOE standard doesn't necessarily mean that you've really got enough space for a given program.
And can I just add? Evidence, like rock solid evidence of that would be our middle school that was too small the day it opened because it met the DOE standards and not...
Right.
A state-funded project.
And it was a fully state-funded project.
Right. So all of these yellow boxes that you see in this chart on page eight of your handout are areas where the rooms that you have are substantially under the DOE standard, and not surprisingly, most of those are at the primary schools and at the existing middle school. And again, I won't go through all of these, but things like typical classrooms too small, art rooms, music rooms too small, using stages and music space because they don't have a, they don't have any other place to do it. Cafeteria, as we've already noted, in the middle school is very, very small, and it goes on and on. As Julie mentioned earlier, I think you should patent that word, gym, maybe, or something like that. In a new building, you would always separate the cafeteria space from the gymnasium space because the gymnasium space is a teaching space, it's not just for kids letting off steam. And if you're smart in the way that you plan the building, the cafeteria should, could be a teaching space as well. So it's very, very important to separate them when you combine them. It reduces the time that kids have for recreation, PE, and health classes in general. So it would be good in a perfect world to correct that at some point. The middle school and the three primary schools also don't have a stage. And again, these days, you would have a stage even in a small elementary school because performing arts and getting kids to learn to speak and perform in front of other people is just very, very important for their social development and confidence building and all those kinds of things. So again, so that chart represents the difference between what we have and what the DOE says you have as a point of reference. The next thing that we did was, I think this looks, I don't have half of that chart. The next thing that we did, and to this I'll refer, if you have an 11 by 17 in front of you, because this particular chart, even with glasses, which may not be adjustable, I think it has, you know, 1.5 point font. But that chart will be on the last page of your 11 by 17. It's sort of the physical inventory of the building. We went in and we looked at all of the construction documents for the buildings originally so we could understand how they're made, how the walls are made, how the roof was made. We spent a lot of time with Todd taking down semen tiles, looking up above, looking at structure, looking at insulation, that kind of stuff. And we found some pretty glaring issues up there, which again, many of which can be corrected, some of which are pretty difficult to correct. But if you look at the beginning for the Blue Point School, and you look at row five, and you go over a few columns and you see a red number, a red number... row five, and you go over a few columns and you see a, a red number, uh, a red number three. Uh, three is the R-value of, of the walls, of the exterior walls of the original wing of that, of that building. Uh, what you have is an R-value of three, what you should have is an R-value of twenty point five. So, um, no matter how energy efficient you are, no matter how good you are in terms of controlling your use of oil and things, you, there's a limit to what you can, what you can do when you have a discrepancy of that size. The nineteen ninety-three wing of, of Blue Point has a wall system that are twelve point eight, but again, they should be twenty point five. And then if you go over to the right of that and you look at, at roof insulation and roof structure, the original wing of, uh, Blue Point has a, has an R-value of fifteen, it should be thirty-eight. So it, it became very, very clear very early that the primary schools, um, were probably consuming a lot more energy to, to, to take care of their, of their needs than they should. And sure enough, that showed up, uh, in the numbers. We got a, a series of spreadsheets from, from Kate Bolton, uh, looking at three years of your actual total expenses to run these buildings. So that's oil and gas and water and sewer and staff salaries and benefits and all those things. What we're trying to do is to try to get a, a, a number that would say, okay, this school costs about this much just in and of itself to run. Uh, because that's, that's good basic data for any changes or, or for spotting problems that those facilities might, uh, might have. So when we, once we did this, this chart, we knew that there were going to be problems at the primary schools in terms of, of inefficiency in that in case, in fact, it became the, uh, the case once we looked at the numbers. So the next, if you go to the next page, or page eleven of your handout, operations and maintenance costs. Uh, this, this is always, uh, a really interesting and revealing, uh, thing on, on sort of the pure facility side. And again, with the overarching goal of wanting to, uh, make the most use of scarce financial resources and at the same time deliver a really high, uh, quality of education for your, for your kids. So the primary school, there are a number of reasons why the operations and maintenance costs were high. Not enough insulation, as you saw before, the building envelope is pretty loose in some places. There was, one day we were at the eight-corner school, we pulled off a ceiling tile, we looked up, and there was a vent pipe that went through the roof and we could see blue skies, in fact, we could see clouds moving. Like, well, that's not, that's not a good thing. It's not a good thing to have a hole through the roof where cold air is coming in all the time. And, and as you might expect, teachers in that area often complained about, uh, their rooms being too cold. So if you can pump all the heat you want to in a, in a room like that, but if you have a hole that was, oh, six inches in diameter, it's going to be a, a problem. And this, and this is in the, uh, the modular wing of the, of the schools. It's one of the things that, that comes up sometimes.
Something about the air conditioning.
Yes. Yeah. The schools are small. Uh, you know, anything under around four hundred students per school would be considered a small school. And although small neighborhood schools have a really good rap in terms of teachers getting to know students and students getting to know teachers and, you know, the whole idea of being able to walk to school, all those kinds of things are, are wonderful. But putting that aside from a purely economic standpoint, they're, they're more costly to operate. And all three of your primary schools are, are substantially below that, uh, below that number overall. What's interesting is when we look at these numbers, you, you'll see that the dollar per square foot cost for the primary schools are not that much, uh, less than the middle school. However, the middle school has air conditioning. And so you would think that the primary schools, when you compare those side by side, would have much, much, much lower operations costs than the middle school because of that. That, just having air conditioning in a building is, is representative of substantial increase in infrastructure, uh, and, uh, operations costs, but also all the studies say that having air conditioning is, is really great for, um, eliminating indoor air quality problems and, and increasing productivity of students and teachers, because teachers are people too. And, uh, they like to have, you know, good, good climate control in their, in their buildings. Uh, so that, that's another example that the primary schools are, are just more costly than they should be. The Wentworth School, and I'm not, I'm not, um, trying to toot our, toot our horn, but we were very.
You're toot away, Dan.
Kelly is completely responsible for the operations costs. And Kelly and, and Jackie.
And Christine.
Christine, don't forget Christine.
Yes, yes, and Christine. Um, we did, as a part of the referendum, we, we had to do a projection of what you think the building operating costs will be. And so far, uh, it's been about thirty-five thousand dollars a year less than, than what we had projected. Uh, and it's because you have new technology and you have, you know, a modern wall and roof systems and very good insulation and, and all that. So there are, there are advantages to that. Um, on the next page, which is a table on chart on page twelve, again, I tried to highlight some of the, I'm putting so much data out to you in a, in a relatively short amount of time, and I expect all of you to read this over the holidays. Kind of highlight things that I wanted to point out. So on row three, uh, of this chart, which takes all those costs that Kate gave us, and we, we broke them up by school and we broke them out in different categories so you could see, it's a really good way to compare, uh, schools within your district. So on, on row three, you see that the intermediate school, uh, where we are right now, five million two hundred thousand dollars, uh, a, a year, basically, for all those costs to run. But the middle school is, is, is five hundred eighty, uh, five, five point eight million, almost five point nine million dollars. The key thing here is the middle school is fifty thousand square feet smaller than this building, and yet it's, you know, six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars a year more expensive to operate. The middle school has air conditioning like this building, but it has an, an older technology. And that technology's twenty years old now, it has a little cooling tower out, out at the back and they're steam. And so they, the, the study recommends that if you were to do, uh, a major renovation addition to the middle school at some point in the future, you should seriously look at upgrading all of those systems and you'll get a payback from that that could be, uh, pretty significant. Again, we were, again, just surprised to see what the delta was between those two buildings given the difference between their size. If you go to row five, you look at the dollar per square feet, you divide all that out and you see that the three primary schools are pretty tight. You see that, um, the high school and the intermediate school are, are pretty, uh, pretty close to each other. And then you see that the Scarborough Middle School is in between, but it's fifty percent more costly per square foot to operate than, than the intermediate school. And again, that, that number has not only utility benefit, but, but, uh, staff cost. And I don't know if there's a difference in, uh, it may be that, that, that number and type of teacher that you need for those two programs may have something to do with that. But again, it's, it stands out. If you go down to row ten, where you're looking, uh, only at the physical plant costs, not staff salaries, again, you see pretty close clusters of the three primary schools, and they're twice the cost of, of the intermediate school and twice the cost of the high school. And they're pretty close to, uh, to the, to the middle school. So there, there are a number of things that you could do if you were to, if you were to keep all four of those buildings, basically the way that they are, there are a number of things that you could do going forward that would help reduce your operations costs for the day. As we said earlier, there's a certain amount of money that you have to spend every year just to have the doors open. So it would be good to, uh, try to reduce that in the facility side.
Yeah. Can you specify what, what staff salaries are included in life? Does, does everyone, all teachers in the school?
Yes, all teachers, administrators, custodian, kitchen, uh, everybody. So staff salaries and benefits. Again, it, the idea is to try to take a financial picture of, of an individual school to compare that to another school in, in the district. I mean, there are a lot of variables that, that may be different from one to the other. But it's, it's a useful way to find where there may be anomalies and then to develop a plan from the facility side to, to address them.
Dan, could I, I just add, um, I'm looking at the plan that has the previous year's square footage, so like where line ten is. If you looked at what it cost us, um, for all physical plant costs, um, in, in the two thousand and fourteen report that was done, it was eleven dollars and forty cents per square foot for Blue Point, thirteen dollars and ten cents for eight corners, thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents for Pleasant Hills, three dollars and eight cents for Wentworth, and that would have, um, um, I'm sorry, this is December fifteenth, yeah. And then it was five dollars, or I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong line, four dollars and forty-five cents for Wentworth, eight dollars and, um, eighty-two cents for the middle school, and two dollars and sixty-five cents for the high school. And the point is that, that the energy costs last year, as we all know, were much lower. But in the previous year, it was almost double and in some cases triple at the primary schools than it was in some of the other schools. So although.
The last thing to do is the fact that the primaries are fueled by, uh, natural gas.
Right.
And the other buildings are not.
And it was a colder winter than it was in last year.
So I just, when I first came here, I saw these numbers and I was like, because they're literally triple in some cases, sometimes five times as much. And so these numbers are, you know, they look closer than, but just know that you could have that there in the primary year.
Yeah.
What are, what's the, what is the high school heated by?
Natural gas.
And then this is geothermal. And that's cooling and, right?
Yes. But it also has natural gas as, as an additional source of heat.
So it seems surprising to me that, that high school has, is not expensive.
Well, it's not fully air-conditioned.
Right, it's not fully air-conditioned. And you're also, uh, you're taking the cost and you're amortizing that over a, a large amount of square foot. You have three hundred thousand square feet in the high school, and, and a, a piece of that, and based on a pretty sizable piece, is just storage. So it's just not going to consume the amount of energy that classroom, uh, would consume. So that high school is, is a little bit different than the other, than the other ones. But again, it's a good, it's a good place to start and, and then use that as a, as a, a measure to compare the other, other schools.
But it's also a testament to the air conditioning, if done correctly.
Yes.
It isn't prohibitively expensive to operate a fully air-conditioned building if it's done.
Exactly. And, and again, the, the benefits in terms of indoor air quality and productivity are just off the, off the charts. I mean, there may be dozens and dozens of studies that have been done nationally about that. And if you wave a magic wand, every, every school that gets built ought to have air conditioning. It just, uh, really, really helps with asthma and allergies and just on and on and on.
The other thing is, is we don't lose boilers as a little wizard.
Right.
And we, since I've been on the school board, we have had that problem, the old Wentworth, for example. And I think once at the high school.
Other than health.
Pardon me?
Other than health.
So, uh, different systems run more efficiently. And, and our, our two, uh, our three elementary schools have not been updated since before, well, the middle school's twenty years, it must be twenty-three or twenty-four. For the, for the elementary schools.
We have twenty-three-year-old boilers, five of the six boilers in the K-two schools are twenty-three years old and getting tired.
And we're, we're really waiting for natural gas to go down those roads.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a long wait.
The only good news is the oil price is so low, and I locked in at last year, I'm at a dollar and forty-seven a gallon for oil. So it's kind of, they're gonna, those schools are gonna look great this year because the oil prices were, got lucky and locked in at its bottom of the, for.
Right. And, and the reality is they look even better if we were properly built and well insulated and that, that kind of stuff. So, again, I mean, it's, it's, for schools, it's really a zero-sum problem. If you have to spend more on facilities, you're just gonna have less money for other things. And there's just not that much room for, uh, for just adding and adding and adding additional costs. If you go to page thirteen, some more metrics that I, I won't bother going through them right now, but again, you can see the, the, the premium and in terms of operations costs, looking at, at various things that the, that the primary schools have. If you go to page fourteen, what we're trying to do is to compare the, the, um, heating costs of one, one school to another. But because Wentworth is geothermal, Wentworth uses a lot of electricity, uh, for its, uh, for its heating and cooling, and also uses natural gas for, for heating. You can, you can tell the system to use more natural gas and less electricity if you want to, or if you, if the, uh, the system is designed for a certain maximum level of coal, if you have a really, really nasty winter, then the natural gas there is available to, uh, to, to supplement that difference between what the system's designed to do and what it may have to do in a, in a bad winter. So we, we've done separate numbers for electricity and separate numbers for heating for all the buildings, but in order to do an apples-to-apples comparison, we thought it was important to combine heating and electrical costs and then look at the six buildings and see where they are. So again, if you look at row, uh, five, the, the middle school, you know, a dollar forty-nine a square foot, Wentworth is a dollar thirteen a square foot. Again, that's, that's a difference in wall construction, roof construction, uh, better technology in windows, you know, you know, really good technology for, for, for cooling. Um, you know, it's not that the middle school is a bad building or anything, but it shows you where, if you were to do something in the future, you should definitely think about upgrading those things. And again, it shows that the, that the three primary schools are on the, on the upper end of, of what you're doing. Um, and again, this, this is where, you know, if you look at the middle school number, a dollar forty-nine, you look at the primary schools in the dollar forty-something range, they're, they're, they're pretty close, but they shouldn't be. They should really be different because the middle school has air conditioning and the three primary schools don't. You would expect to see a, a much bigger delta between those. And so again, it just shows that, that, uh, the primary schools have used them help. So on, on page fifteen, in terms of looking at potential options, and again, if you look at the, uh... Is there a way to like get it to just go, you know?
If I draw her the paper, I can do it for you.
Well, you have this chart in front of you. Um, so there were seven options that, that were looked at when we were looking at reducing the amount of square footage you had when the population was, was really going, uh, to the works.
I'll get that up there.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's good. That's perfect. Um, but for this, because, because of this change in population and additional meetings that we've had and work that we've done, uh, we've come up with, with six options, looking at what we know now in terms of what is out there for populations to meet. The issues on, on energy use and, uh, you know, facilities are still the same, education facilities. But there's, there's a number of other things we want you to, to look at and think about. So, so the first option A is the, on page fifteen, is the maintain the status quo, basically do nothing new to the buildings. You would simply, uh, put Band-Aids on stuff that's broken when it breaks, you would, you would only send the, the minimum amount of money that you need to or that you can afford to, uh, to take care of those facility issues. And that's a reasonable strategy, especially if, um, one of the goals is for you to apply for state funding. So it wouldn't make, make sense to put a half a million dollars into your facilities and to wait and find out what the state says and whether or not they might give you some money to, to do that. So that do-nothing option is also very helpful. And actually, that's the blue line, that's the, that's the top line, because we can model financially, um, the return on investment, the cost benefit of, of any option that you might come up with in terms of consolidating, adding on, the energy upgrade, any of those kinds of things. So for RSU twenty-one, which is Kennybunk, Kennybunk, Port and, and Rundle, before they did their building, uh, we, we did a series of studies. And we took the existing costs, in this, in this case, uh, this was option four A of, of, of seven that they looked at. And we, we, we got all those costs from, from their business manager, and then we ran those out twenty-four years into the future. And we, we just said, well, let's, let's assume it's going to be a two to three percent annual increase going out to the future, just as, as a, as a basis. And what's interesting, what was interesting for RSU twenty-one is when they did that, they saw that in twenty years, they would have spent eighty, ninety million dollars on their little, uh, elementary schools, just, you know, not much bigger than, than what you have right now. So then the committee started thinking, well, if we could just tweak that a little bit every year going out twenty-four years, that eighty, ninety million dollars might be, maybe it's going to be seventy-five, I mean, it can be less than that. So again, they started thinking about options in terms of both, uh, providing the, the educational spaces that you needed, but also trying to figure out ways to reduce the operations and maintenance costs. So in this particular option, uh, they had four elementary schools. And this option, they said, okay, we're gonna close two of those four elementary schools because their, their population was, was, was falling off a cliff. It was like a... It was like a, almost like a forty-five degree angle, and it continues to be that way. So they knew that they had to take some buildings offline. They just had much, they had about six hundred students' worth of excess capacity in a district in your building. So, so they were spending a lot of money just to have these buildings open, and it, it didn't make sense. And, and so in this, in this scheme, they would close two elementary schools. So all those kids would then have to go to the other two elementary schools. So those buildings would get substantial additions and renovations and upgrades. So they would, they would be all the educational programming standards that they wanted to. And they would also be much, much more energy efficient. We would basically rip out the electrical and mechanical systems and completely replace them and use, use modern technology. So there was a construction cost for that. And in order to make a fair comparison between what all these renovations and additions this improved efficiency might do compared to the sort of do-nothing option, we also recalled the main bond bank, we got a schedule, we did a construction estimate, we got a schedule for the bond repayment, and we put that into the spreadsheet as well. So those two, the red and the blue lines, the blue is the do-nothing and the red is the, the option four A with all of these improvements, start out at the same point. And you can see that there's a note there that says, "Start the bond payment." So when that happens, the red line goes up pretty quickly because your bond payments at the beginning are, are higher than they are as you go along. But the consolidation, which would take about a year and a half to get all the construction done, the consolidation was saving substantial amounts of money in operations and maintenance costs. So eventually what happened is those red and blue lines crossed, so that the option four A, the red line, became cheaper than the option, than the do-nothing option. And over time, that gap kept enlarging and enlarging and enlarging. So at the end of twenty-four years, the, the projection was that they would save about eight million dollars over, over the do-nothing option. So you can do a lot with eight million dollars if you think about it as a return on investment from the, from the very beginning. And in the final, the final year of the comparison, they were gonna save about eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars just in that one operating year. Now, we played with it with different percentages of inflation, one percent, two percent, three percent. And what happens is those lines still cross and you still get savings overall. The angle of it might change a little bit. If you have a spike in energy in one year, say halfway through the bond, both, both lines will get cheaper in terms of their cost. So their, their relationship to each other is, is what we really wanna look at, not, not what the absolute total dollar amount might, might be. But you can, you can set up spreadsheets and models pretty easily. For example, if you wanted to either repair the, the primary schools or consolidate the primary schools into a new building, this is the tool that is, that is available to do. So we wanted to, to show you that. So that's, that's part of option A and what might happen. Back on page fifteen, option B would be, again, pretty simple and conservative, just renovate the existing schools that you have in place and improve their efficiency, their energy efficiency and durability, things like that. And then you could think about replacing the modulars in each of those. Again, there are twelve modulars in the, in the primary school. And, and that would also help substantially. Again, you can model the return on investment for that. Option C on page fifteen is new construction. We, we got to talking at committee level about replacing your existing modulars, which again are old technology and not very energy efficient, although the manufacturers are probably clean as they are, with, with newer modular construction of a more permanent kind. And by modular, I mean that there, there are companies in, in the U.S. that will build classrooms in a factory and then take the classrooms and put them on a foundation. So they claim that there are savings to do that because they control the conditions of construction and that the erection time is much, much quicker, et cetera, et cetera. So Julie asked us to look at that, and I contacted a company in the greater Boston area. They, they were a little bit helpful, but they really, you'd have to go in with a, with a pretty concrete floor plan for them to say, okay, it would cost this much, and then we can compare that to conventional construction and see if there is any difference. Because they gave me price differences of a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a square foot up to three hundred dollars a square foot. Well, that, you know, that, that's a fifty percent swing, so that, that doesn't help. But i- if you were to consider something, this would be an avenue of research that we could do to see what, what it might, how it might benefit, benefit you if at all. My sense is that every manufacturer has a different way that they build things and different, different way that they do it in the, in the factory. And so you really have to do a very detailed analysis, if, if, you know, are you getting that R-value in the long term or five that you really want, or, or you're not, that, that kind of thing. But it, it would be an option to do. On page seventeen of your handout, and this one, this, this was something that we looked at early on, new construction, you basically would close the three primary schools and then build a new consolidated primary school on the municipal campus. So if you turn to page eighteen for a second, you'll see drawing, and I'll try to get- Close enough. Close enough. That's why I always like to have cameras, because people can hold them in their hand and look at. So in this, this idea, you see these two shaded areas on the right-hand side of the plan. The idea was that you would, you would build a consolidated primary school, K through two, could be as many as seven hundred and fifty kids, if you look at the planning decisions projections, on your municipal campus. And there's a couple of places where you might be able to do it, but I, I use the word "might" in quotations and in capital letters, because you have slopes in the backside of the site, you have wetlands that have been mapped, although they were mapped probably ten years ago and need to be remapped. And you probably have rental pools. So from a permitting standpoint, there would be a lot of research to do to find out if there is enough land that you could use outright in that back area or through wetlands mitigation, that kind of thing. But the idea of having another school on the campus would be great, just in terms of the, you know, you have five buildings on the campus now, including town hall and the, and the town library. So it, it, from a, you know, sort of urban planning standpoint, it would be a great thing to do if, if the land were. And then we're showing that, that dark line, we're showing building a road that would go down the slope and connect with Sawyer Road at the back. So now the middle school and the backside of the campus and this potential consolidated school would have a second access to the campus. And I think that that's pretty important for the middle school, particularly because you have one driveway. All it would take would be a car accident to block that driveway and then a fire start at the same time, maybe improbable, but it's, you know, it's, it would be great to have another way in and out of that site from, from the middle school. So, so we showed, I mean, there's no plan for that, and we haven't been able to design anything. What we did is we looked at a project, and we recently opened up in Corrent, a new elementary school, state-funded, and we used the square feet per student number that that building ended up having and, and the dollar per square foot number that that building ended up having. It's a DOE-funded project, so again, it's, it's not an excessive amount of money. It's conservative in terms of what the space that they allocated for it and, and the cost of it. And then on page nineteen, we did, we did real, real rough numbers. And I don't want anybody to be concerned about these numbers, because this could be plus or minus twenty percent at, at this point. But what we did is we, we said, all right, if you, if you believe in the planning decisions projections, if you are to build that school for at least seven hundred and fifty students, because by twenty twenty-five, that's what planning decisions necessarily have in the building, you might even think about being larger, because if those numbers are correct, you didn't, you wouldn't have any capacity for growth there. So we, we used the multiple dollar per square foot that was at Corrent, and we threw some money in there for site work and estimating contingency. And then we ran all the numbers down in the standard department-led budget format and came up with, you know, just over fifty million dollars. And again, this isn't, this isn't a bid, this is, this is a master plan approximation. Could be forty, might be, could be forty-five, might be that as well. But, but you'd have to do all the normal research that you would need to do in order to actually program it, draw it, and then, and then budget it. And again, when this happens, you know, it could be five years from now. I mean, you know, it's just, the purpose of a master plan is to model all these things so that then decision-makers can have the information that they need to make decisions. So that is option D. Option E looks at the, at the middle schools. We'd renovate and expand the middle schools, right-size all those program space shortages that we talked about, and to replace those twelve modular classrooms with new permanent construction. So if you look at page-
Twenty.
Twenty. Look at page twenty of your handout, there's a site plan. So we're showing the road, this new road access for both building potentials, because you just think that that would be a good thing to have overall for your campus. And once you remove and replace the, the passive equality modulars, you end up freeing up a whole bunch of space for parking. But shortage of parking is something that, that all the schools have. So we added some additional parking, and we're showing wings that, that could be added onto the building to take care of those program issues. So if you look at page twenty-one-
Again, you have questions, Scott.
Yes.
Any reason why you wouldn't just cut straight across and go into Sawyer instead of running it through that kind of long?
We were following the contours, and it may be hard to see, maybe hard to see at all on the, on the screen. But the area where, the shaded areas on the, on the right-hand side, there's a, in the past, there were a lot of wetlands that were mapped there and pretty steep contours. So we, we put the road in a, in a, in a direction that where the contours were gentler and where they looked like there was hotlands rather than wetlands. But you certainly could, would study that. You know, the step one would be to map the wetlands and the rental pools and to know what you have on the site and then to figure out the most cost-effective way to do that.
Which I now know what rent a pool buys, and it all back home.
There's a pair of words out there. So here's a floor plan of the, of the middle school, and, and thank you, Julie, very much.
You're crazy.
Yeah. So-
If you stay much longer, I'm just gonna patter on the heads.
Yeah, right. So the twelve classrooms at passive equality, this, this is a classroom wing that has six classrooms on two floors. So the first thing we wanted to do is to connect it physically to the existing building, because the fact that passive equality is separate and the security issues and the building management issues that that represents is, is really, really appealing. So connecting it back to the building is already a hallway system over here to get to the gym. So we would simply, we would simply be picking up on that hallway system, extending it out, and putting a two-story wing there. And then we're showing that you could actually put another two-story wing over here by extending that hallway around the end of the gym, if at some point in the future you, yourself and you could do that. It expands the cafeteria, it expands the kitchen, it expands admin, some additional space for guidance. You know, the additional classrooms, you, you would kind of optimize the spaces with functions better for the entire plan. And that would be part of the, part of the planning system. And then up on the second floor, you'd have that classroom wing. And again, this, this shaded area right here is basically a notch in the plan on two floors. So we would basically fill that in two stories, and that would become special ed space or something, something like that. There's, there's no-
Isn't that part of the library?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's right. Because the library is eight hundred and fifty square feet smaller than it should be. So that's a place where you could extend the library. Thank you.
Yes.
The second floor of this new classroom wing doesn't connect easily to the rest of the plan. There's the, there's that track and the middle school gymnasium. So it would be awkward, it may be a security issue to have kids hatch from this classroom wing through the gym, then they'd have to go through the library and, and into the, the main central hall where the stairs is. So it would probably be better in this situation to just have stairs on either end of that wing, and they would have to go down in order to go into the rest of the building. But it's, it's something that you could, something you could look at.
Yes.
Yes.
And Christine, was there any talk at all about making the middle school an elementary school and then building a new middle school?
There hasn't been, but there could be-
Middle school.
There hasn't been any discussion that, that we've been a part of, but it could be. I mean, you can, at this point, it is without-
I just, I just happen to think of this now, so it, I, I would like that to go back to the committee, and let me tell you the reason. If we had to do all this renovation to make it adequate as a middle school, is it adequate space for elementary-age children?
What grade, exactly? No, K-two. Well, you can't put them up on the second floor.
Sure you can.
Well, second graders you can, but not the K-ones.
I bet there's no passing of time.
Also, the library is on the second floor.
Library is-
It could be looked at, Jackie, pretty quickly and easily. The, the code, the code doesn't allow kindergarten first graders to be on the second floor unless they have a special dedicated stairway for their emergency needs, which is almost impossible to do. And the reason is because the, the code is afraid that bigger kids can trample the smaller kids in an emergency. So all your core spaces and K-one schools have to be on the first floor. So in this case, it wouldn't, and I think it would work so well.
And I just want to remind everyone, that was one of the major problems with Wentworth, was that it was designed for middle school and junior high, and it was being used for three-five, and it was not appropriately sized, like water fountains were too tall, seats, you know, nothing was the right size for intermediate kids. So we run into all that again.
So on page twenty-three, we did a budget for this, and again, same thing, just simple dollar per square foot, make some assumptions about the amount of work that might be required. That, that came to about fourteen million dollars, including the road going down to Sawyer. And when you run the numbers out, that might be, you know, eighteen million dollars or there about, if you're just going to address the, the middle school issues. So the, the other option that was talked about, had been talked about, which is, I think that's page, page sixteen, no, seventeen, was option F, which would be to expand Wentworth and move the sixth grade into the building. And this was something that, that we looked at last year, and we looked at it originally not adding on to Wentworth, but just seeing if there was enough space in the building to move the sixth grade out of the middle school into Wentworth, therefore, thereby reducing the stress on the building at the, at the middle school. It would become a two-grade building instead of a three-grade building. And we did a, we did a drawing for that as well. But it, it didn't work. It was, what we ended up doing is taking all the rooms that, that had been originally planned for various functions, and we basically had the commandeered special ed spaces and, and other spaces in the building just to come up with a, a minimum classroom count to take care of those kids, because the sixth grade has about eleven classrooms in the middle school right now. Yes, Chris?
So Dan, I also recall, and maybe this changes, we looked at on the other end too, possibly moving second grade there, and then closing one of the local schools and then consolidating K-one, first and others with it. Is that off the table, or?
Well, that was done as a part, when, when we had projections that said that your K-two population was going to drop steadily, and that you were gonna end up with, with much too much square footage in your inventory, that was part of, part of that discussion. Now it's the, now it seems to be the other way around. So we, we did this plan, and on the second floor of this plan, which is your page twenty-five, the second floor, we have the fifth grade in the upper part and the sixth grade in the, in the lower part. But again, when we met with Kelly, it, it just, basically you would match out the entire building, you'd have more kids than you really had space for it. The building was designed for about eight hundred kids, you'd have well in excess of nine hundred kids if you did that. And we started looking, looking at the things like, well, do you even have enough available section, say in arts or in music, in a given week, to take care of all those, all those kids? And, and so it, 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 it just, it just really matched out the building too much. However, if you were to add four maybe sixth classrooms to the end of that wing, and there's room out there for it, the, the driveway that goes around the back of Wentworth was pulled away from the building in order to allow for expansion in the future, then you could put more classroom- put more classroom space in, but the core space crowding might still be an issue from the scheduling at this point. And so if anything like that was ever considered, you'd really have to look at that scheduling issue in some detail. So those were, this is where the options stand at this point. And so the last piece of this is looking at finding funding for these projects. If you go back to page 17, the deal we last took applications for state-funded projects in 2010, '11, and they just announced three or four months ago that they're going to do it again now, finally, six years later. So the way that it, the way it's going to work is the applications are now available online. They're due on April 14th of 2017. From May to December of 2017, the Department of Ed team will go and visit every single school that applied in detail, and basically come up with a scoring system using, they have a set of criteria that's published on the web, and they would visit and start their scoring system. From January to March of 2018, they would do their final scoring, and then they would publish the list, you know, late spring, March, April of 2018, April and into the summer. And at that point, you would know whether or not you ranked high enough on the list that you might get state funding at some point in the future. And if you do get high up on that list, it's really worth the application because it could be a substantial amount of money for you. In the last round in 2010, there were 71 schools that applied, and so far, they funded 14 of those 71. I don't know if they're going to keep going down the list beyond 14 or not, but 14 or 15 is probably as many as you might expect, given the shortages of funding. It's a function of the Department of Ed and the state deciding if they're going to open up more bond capacity for borrowing for the home more schools that they've got on the list. But it's definitely worth doing, and we'll work with Todd after the New Year and front-end carrying the application. The good news is that you have the data for the application already, because you've done this master plan. And the state will require you to do separate applications for each of the primary schools and the middle school. And then they, if you get high up on the list, they decide whether or not they want you to combine schools or renovate some in place. But it's highly likely, I think it's like a 99% chance, that if you got to the top, near the top of the list, that they would expect you to consolidate the primary schools. So, and that's about as much as we know of this plan. So the rest of the stuff that's in this package is just existing drawings, and again, good reading and follow them.
So, thank you so much for this. This package is amazing. Just in the interest of time, I'd like to limit comments or questions just to the school board, if anyone has any specific questions for Dan.
No, but I thank you, Dan, for hanging in there with us, because we really went from one place to a completely different place in about six months.
Right. It's true that you know and didn't fill the school.
After the planning decisions update, I think that shed new light. So again, very appreciative of all the time that you've put in with all of us on the committee and that. So, thank you.
It's fun to do.
It's eye-opening, that, for sure.
And I'm glad we went back because of all the new housing that projected to be built in Scarborough and the new neighborhoods.
And thank you to Dan Bacon, because he was quite helpful with all of our meetings and finding out where the new housing starts were and how many building permits and all that. So that definitely helped enlighten us a little more.
Jackie? Excuse me, thank you for this in-depth study, and I now expect it because you do such a great job.
Thank you.
Excuse me, please. I think that, I suggest that the board have a workshop just devoted to this, nothing else on the agenda, separate workshop to talk about options. And then I think we should have a second workshop on this topic with the town council. When we have decided which way we might wish to go, then we need to sit down with the council to see how they're feeling about it. I agree with Dan, go ahead and put in the applications, but our chances of getting, you know, last time they said that our buildings were absolutely the cleanest buildings they had ever seen, and we never got on the list. So, but I'm not saying don't clean the buildings.
But that was for the old Wentworth.
But you know, it's interesting, a place like Falmouth, they consolidated and they got funding.
Brewer did as well. I went to the Brewer School.
I think it really kind of depends on what the situation is. So I'd like to hope that we could get on the list and get some money.
Yeah. It's definitely worth applying. Again, it adds a year to whatever you might do, but it's really worth it, because if nothing else, if you don't get funding, then you can tell the community, "Okay, we've tried the conventional funding route, and it's not going to be available to us, so now let's talk about what we might do instead."
Well, and a couple of, two key points, actually. Yes, we do have to apply for each building, because we're not, we're not applying for a solution. We're identifying the problems in each of our buildings. And so it doesn't, it's not about how clean our buildings are, but it's a very specific criteria of, is there health risks, are there structural risks? And that's how the points are allocated. But by applying, although it is labor-intensive, and Todd will do a great job with Dan's support, I am confident, it does hold us harmless for the current conditions of our building. So that when those five boilers do go and we decide to replace them with a more energy-efficient solution or any other improvements we make, adding new windows, things like that, so we can have some short-term gains, it doesn't change our status with the DOE. So we'll still be on that list along with the 50-some others that did not get funded in the last round. But my hope, the ultimate optimism in me, is that everyone else will be discouraged by the process and we'll be at the top of the list.
Great. The other thing is, if you compare the construction of our middle school with the construction of this building, there's no comparison, because when we built the middle school, we had to build it to their specs, number one, and number two, we had to use the contractor that came in with the lowest bid.
Well, that's what we used.
And we had no control over that. And at least, the last two projects we've had, if you look at this building and you look at our high school, there's no comparison to the level of work that was produced, the two buildings that were produced, even though we had to pay for them. At least we controlled the constructions.
This was the lowest bid, too.
Well, I did, and then it came in $3 billion.
Jody? Do you have something to add?
I just wanted to thank Todd, too, because it sounds like he's doing some miracle work with, you know, the buildings that we have in town. So, and thank you for this report. It is sort of fascinating to read what's happening and the depth that you've got into in this. So thank you for that.
Yeah. And if you wanted to continue with the workshops, we would welcome that. I think spend some time to just absorb this information. Again, this is a smaller piece of a bigger piece of an overall study. But since we have all this data, it's really easy to model other options, draw other things, you know, just brainstorming with the D and see where you want to go.
Great. Thank you so much for hanging in with us.
And thank you, everyone, for standing at the longest school board meeting ever.
That's what I was going to say. This is possibly the most ambitious agenda that's been assembled, so, way to go. But I'm going to suggest that we table 7.3 to brainstorm ideas for continuous improvement for our students and facilities, because I think we have absorbed a lot tonight and wouldn't be so good at pumping out ideas. So...
See, I also personally would like to think the council, the council is going to help along with the legislature, because I think that they garnered some information that they might not have. Thank you for your support.
Yep. And thank everybody for coming. And with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Couple seconds.
On favor? Thank you.